...ninth minutes.
Motion on the floor by Mike to approve, can we get a second?
Okay.
Second by Gina, all those in favor, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried unanimously. We have our agenda this evening and we have a couple of folks to put on. We have Alan Damon.
Jill's gonna...
Oh Jill's there too, sorry Jill. I seen you sitting there too. Lloyd?
Yep.
Peter? Are there any other additions or corrections to the agenda? Let's put those folks right on top if that's okay with you guys.
Make a motion to approve tonight's agenda with the addition of Alan and Jill and Lloyd at the top of the agenda.
Motion on the floor by Mike, can we get a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Donnie, all those in favor, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried unanimously. Lloyd, welcome. What can we do for ya?
Okay, I'm here tonight representing Pierce Freedom Fest. We'll get you... Okay, that's fine, that's fine. I don't mind at all. Okay, I'm just here representing Pierce Freedom Fest and this will be our third annual one. In the last two years, City of Pierce has been sponsored and I'm just coming to ask if they'd be a sponsor given the 500 that they have in the past.
Any thoughts from anybody?
I think it's a good deal. Brings in people.
It seems like the community really enjoys it.
Brings in a lot of people. We've had no problems and it's gone well.
What type of entertainment have you set up here?
Uh yeah, the entertainment is Dallas Smith is number one, it would be the headliner.
Okay.
Natalie Stovall and the Drive would be the second one and Massey Woods would be the opening.
Okay.
And that's not announced until April 1st. Otherwise I get in trouble.
I was writing it down for summer because I was putting it on Facebook.
I know, but it's not supposed to be out there yet. That's okay, we're okay.
My boy, he's got it on Facebook.
I'm gonna say Gina's giving it to you.
He didn't put it out there, it's just what people hear.
No. Yeah, I'm sorry Lloyd.
He's trying to get you in trouble, distract you from the money thing.
You know what? I've been in trouble so much ago it hasn't made me happy. This will be a small one.
Can we get a motion on the floor to help sponsor the event again this year?
I'll make that motion to sponsor $500 for the event.
It's a motion on the floor from Donnie, can we get a second?
I'd second. Go ahead Gina.
Second by Gina, all those in favor, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Good luck Lloyd.
Thank you.
Hopefully everything works out good, you guys have good weather again.
Let us know on April 1st who they are, if they're gonna be there.
Yeah. You can do that.
I'll be happy.
You want to send over an official memo or something?
We can send over an official memo. Just take care of it, Scott. Thank you very much, we appreciate the support and everything the city does.
No, it's all right.
People working together. Working together. It's gonna be July 18th. Gates will open at 3:00. Okay, thank you.
Thank you Lloyd.
Nice evening. See you later.
See you Lloyd.
The Damons, hi folks.
Hello.
What can we do for ya?
Well, we have two questions for the city. We have signed a purchase agreement and we're hoping to build a new store and so we see this as an opportunity for the community and a responsibility to make this a store that enriches the community. And so we intend to have a community meeting to ask the community about what they would like to see in a store. First, we thought we would bring that question to you as the leaders of what do you see Pierce needing in a store? And one of the things that is our hope is to use the store as a way for the community to connect. So that's question one. And then the second question is, last fall we had read in the paper that Pierce was working on being a green city and we hope to make our building as green as possible and so we'd like to learn more about ways that we can do that and kind of your goals and how we can fit in with those as much as possible.
Sure. You know, from the standpoint of what would we like to see in a business, you know, I personally, I don't know if I have any things I would really, you know, like to see, you know, that type of thing. I think the more options though that are out there, you know, for folks I think is, would definitely be a plus for the city and, you know, for your guys in the business venture, I guess. I don't know how these guys feel or what they would like to see in those types of, you know, but... Yeah, what kind sort of things did you, you guys have anything in mind as far as other than, I mean you're still gonna do the grocery store thing over there.
Yes.
That's why I'm asking.
It's the primary focus.
Well, we've had requests for a deli, we've had requests for a sit-down area.
Like a coffee shop type of thing?
Coffee shop, drive-through.
Drive-through coffee.
And... And so we are, we're in the design stage and, or the dreaming design stage and so now is the time for us to collect ideas and, you know, if there are things that maybe we can't do at this point but we think would be a good thing to build later on, maybe at least including them into the phase two or three stage.
Sure. Well, I think from a city standpoint that we're as, as I near as we try to grow the city and we kind of touch base a little bit on this, but I think as A, create jobs and B, there's always conversations of how we can connect our younger generation within our community. Whether that be at the school or whoever, trial families and younger families and things like that. So maybe try and tie in to bring those kids into the, you know, have, have something to tie more the younger generation. Not make it just a grocery store and a, and a deli. Get the theme and the atmosphere to draw more of the younger generation so we can create more jobs and create a create growth in our city.
What do you see that being?
Well, you know, in a lot of different cities there, they have, you know, like community centers and things like that. The coffee shop is a huge thing, obviously you go to a college, atmosphere. That's where we went a lot to go study and hang out with three, four different friends, classmates, things like that. So yeah, I understand we're, you guys are just into it.
I want a little more focus on, and I guess I'm just thinking of, well, the, like the farmer's market and things of that nature.
That's, we had a conversation with Scott and that's, one consideration is to make sure we have enough parking space in front actually to host the farmer's market in our parking lot. So you know, that's, that's some of the stuff that, like I say, we had a good conversation with Scott already, but we thought we'd come before the
Yeah.
council just asked questions and one of the questions I posed to Scott and it's something that I think all of us need to think about as, as a council, as a city, as businesses. What are we doing to attract some of those twenty, twenty-plus percent students that are open to roll to attract those families to live in this community?
Well, I think we're doing a lot. You know, I guess as a, as a city of, of, you know, under fifteen hundred people, I don't see too many cities that are actually out there doing what we're doing.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just saying, but we, we
Yeah.
maybe we need to highlight it more, you know, to, to attract you here, because it's, it's gonna, it's gonna, it's gonna snowball. As we get a few more people to move in, a few more businesses, it just keeps building.
Yeah, unfortunately, I mean it takes more than just a good school district to bring in extra business and things of that nature, you know. It's a plus, don't get me wrong, it's a huge plus for our community. You know, that's only one small piece of that, of that puzzle, you know. You know, we're trying to make Pierce a more, and I mean, if you look at, at what's happened over the last ten years, you're gonna see a total reconstruction of, of Main Street, you know, all these other grants and, you know, we wanna make Pierce an affordable place to live, that's why we haven't raised taxes in, in the last eight years, you know. I mean, there's, there's so many things that we're doing to try and make this a more attractive community, both aesthetically, financially, in other ways, you know, that, I mean, we're just, don't get me wrong, it's, it's a long process and we're still not done, but...
Yeah. And, and we feel that the grocery store is part of that puzzle too, a new store. It's something that, trying to look ahead to the future, five and 10 years down the road, the future of what will attract those customers five years and 10 years from now, that we can implement some of those things now and have the other ones that we can implement in the future for, to continue to grow and make it a, a place that they want to shop, a place that they want to come and connect. A place that they feel that they have, I guess the word I'd say is ownership of, that's their, their store.
That they belong.
That they belong.
Yeah, I mean from a, you know, from a private business aspect, you know, I mean those are things that you need to try and, you know.
And that's what we're working on.
Yeah.
But that, that's why we're here asking questions.
Yeah, and unfortunately, with some of those, I, I don't have an answer, you know. Obviously, the more things that we can get, you know, more varieties of things that we have in our city is what's gonna attract more people. You know, it's gonna attract, you know, more visitors, more residents, you know, the, the whole thing, you know, so I think it's definitely about diversity, trying to, you know, get out in front of some of these, maybe some of the new ideas, things of that nature, you know. That's what's, that's what's gonna work, you know. What all those are, I, I wish I had the answer, I know some of these folks up here do, but, you know, there's...
And there might be things over the next days or weeks that you think of?
Oh yeah, yeah.
That pop into your head tonight?
Yeah, yeah.
We'd love to hear that.
Yeah. No, you know, to your green question, I'm not sure what you guys had in mind as far as building or wanting to go green or if you know anything about, you know, what green building is, that sort of thing.
There's two different, two different definitions of green. One is green material when you build it.
It all goes down as green, yeah. Your construction, your heating, your electric, things of that nature, try to be as more energy efficient as you can.
As we, we met with, with a third party just recently.
Okay.
And he recommended that, you know, we have R50 on the walls for, for insulation. He recommends walls that are one foot thick with styrofoam inside of. And the question is, how is styrofoam green? Well, he says, okay, you take styrofoam up front, just in the front part it's not green, but you, you spread the energy savings of the fossil fuel over the next fifteen years, it becomes quite green. So I, I mean, there's two different definitions of green.
Well, I do.
And I think as far as from a city standpoint, incorporating the green, as our city is a green step city, there's a number of different things that you can do to help incorporate the city with the business itself. So with that being said, I just wrote down a couple of things that came to mind and he just kind of talked about, about geothermal heating. The farmer's market is one thing, incorporating that by local, purchasing local foods is another step that would be green. I think a big, one of the bigger ones was walking distance, making it easily accessible for people to walk or even bike to the grocery store, to whatever store, whatever business, instead of obviously jumping in a car and creating pollution and everything else to get to that location. Working with a third party to incorporate what you can. And even the lighting and stuff like that, obviously you're aware of that because you use it currently. But I think what is really gonna help you be more green as well to incorporate with the city is to support the local farmers to buy that local food to, to help incorporate that will, will definitely be a big in the eyes of the Green Step Cities program.
And you know, going green is, is nice and, and I think we all support that after making these steps to try and become a green step city. But along with that comes a fairly expensive price tag. You know, if you're starting to talk geothermal heat, you're talking your one-foot-thick foam walls, things of that nature, you know. I know there's some manufactured products out there that might be a little cheaper than just, you know, conventional type construction, but yeah, it's, it's not cheap.
No, it's not.
And hopefully the savings come in the long run.
If it comes a balance.
Yeah.
I say it's just, now's the time to explore.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean if you guys have any other ideas or you wanna, excuse me, sit down and have a little brainstorming session on, you know, what you think might be a a good asset to put in there, you know, we'd love to sit down with you folks and see if we can figure something out, run some ideas back and forth.
Okay.
Are there guidelines that go with the Green Step program specifically or is it kind of more ideals?
I'm not sure, commercial end.
There, the best would be is to do some research. On our end, I know we have a program that we follow.
I don't think the residents are required to follow those.
No, no. It's more correct. But, and we classify, there's different city ratings or classes, I guess, obviously Minneapolis is much different than the city of Pierce, so there's different classifications that qualify as a green, Green Step City. But I guess if, I can share that program with you or I guess we can discuss that, otherwise if there's things that come forward that we can discuss and see if it would qualify.
I know from the residential info, while, and I don't know if it ever got put into place, but they were actually offering tax credit for going green. So there was, there was actually some money that was supposed to become available to general contractors in homeownership, building, building green homes. So I don't, I don't know if that ever came into fruition or not, but I know that was a topic at the state level for quite a while.
Thank you.
Oh yeah, like I said Alan, if you guys wanna sit down and give Scott a call, I'd be I'd be happy to sit down with you guys and run through some ideas.
Sounds good, thank you.
Thanks you guys.
Good luck.
Thank you. How's everything coming, Alan, how's the process coming?
Well, we're in the, in the late stages.
Yes.
Trying to pull stuff together and, you know, figure out what direction we're going, where to put the building and what's gonna be in it.
Yeah.
So we've, we've had, I think we had three or four meetings today and I think we have two tomorrow.
Do you have any sort of timeline when you guys are looking to either start or get completed or?
Don't write this Terry, she's...
Just ideas, you know.
Probably the longest will be groundbreaking be the spring of 2016.
Okay.
I don't think we'll see any construction this summer.
Okay.
Unless it's real late fall, but like I say, it's, things can happen fast, things can get stalled too. So it's...
It's a big undertaking, big project.
Yeah, it is big and, and as, as you guys have, have been, had dealt on the land before, you knew that it was bouncy and before, before we, we probably had the dream of putting a store there, till we had a purchase agreement, we didn't wanna waste too much energy or or dollars on trying to figure it out.
Absolutely.
So we're a little bit hard in front of the horse, but we'll get there.
Yeah. Good.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda was our annual designations. Add to, restructure some things with Matt's resignation and Gina's appointment, so basically in most cases took all of the committees that Matt was sitting on, switched out for Gina. We did make one other change, did we make one other change in public works?
For the...
Donnie went to public works and Stephanie went to
Tobacco.
Tobacco Board.
And comprehensive plan?
No, comprehensive.
And comprehensive plan. We will need a motion to approve those designations.
I made the motion to approve the restructuring of the annual designations and appointments for 2015.
It's a motion on the floor by Mike, can we get a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Donnie, all those in favor, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried unanimously. We have St. Joseph's Church, there's some gambling permits that they're looking for.
These are pretty self-explanatory, they come through every year.
Bingo raffle.
Bingo raffle. And there are two of them in your packets.
And that is for the annual bazaar.
Yep.
Can we get a motion?
One motion or two?
I think we should
A motion for each.
We should do for each, yes, I agree. Can we get a motion on the raffle?
I'll make a motion for the raffle.
Motion on the floor by Donnie, can we get a second? Second by Gina, all those in favor, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried unanimously. We have the pull tabs.
Just to correct you here, one of them, I apologize, one is for St. Joseph's Church. The other one's, and the other one's for Holy Trinity, so they both have raffle and bingo, uh bingo.
Permits, are we talking to one?
There's a permit for St. Joseph's, there's a permit for Holy Trinity, so tobacco.
On each of these?
Correct, on bingo, raffle, pull tabs.
One on each, the permit is asking that they can do all three.
Yes, so, yep, so for example, St. Joseph's Church does bingo, raffle, pull tabs.
All on the same day.
Well then we should only, then we should only...
One for the church and one for the churches.
Then we did that one.
Church is done, so we need the school.
So we should do the pull tabs.
Raffle would be the church that, uh, Donnie and Gina.
We did the church, so then the other one is gonna be the school.
Okay, and that is the pull tabs.
So I request that we change it.
No, it's not the pull tabs, it's...
Okay, there's, there's two different permits here.
Really?
The first permit is for St. Joseph's Church and it's their gambling permit because they do bingo, raffle and pull tabs.
And that's all on one permit?
And that's all on one permit. So we really only need to make two, correct?
Two, so I'm gonna request that we redo this motion in second for St. Joseph's Church.
I'll make the motion again for St. Joseph's Church for their gambling permit.
For the bingo, pull tab, raffle.
Gina, second, so we're back to good.
Okay. Motion on the floor, and was second, all those in favor, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried unanimously. The second one is for
For raffle, for Holy Trinity.
Is there a motion on the floor to approve the raffle for Holy Trinity?
Can make that motion.
Motion on the floor by Mike, with a second.
I'll second.
Second by Steph, all those in favor, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried unanimously. Thanks for pointing that out Scott. Uh, we have our, these pay equity reports, are they annual or are they every other year?
They are. They can be annual or they can be up to every third year. So it depends on when they draw.
Decide to check, okay.
So we did have the, um, the, the report was submitted, that was back in December, January, around that time, we did speak about that, it was in the packets. Just as an FYI, just wanted to put in the packets that everything has passed and we are good to go.
Seen that, they give us a really key little certificate and everything, huh?
Yeah, he did. I just wanted to inform you as council about that.
Thanks Scott. Next on the agenda, we have a fire department retirement and that is Mark Verman. And Mark is a twenty-year veteran who has decided to retire, so. He's a member with Mark, he got on the same year he did and had a chance to work with him in a lot of different capacities and, um, good man and, yeah, he's gonna be missed on the fire department.
Sir, his name was what, Training Officer, Assistant Chief, so he handled some officer positions and did a fine job.
Yeah, he did, he was a very, very good guy to work with. I appreciate everything he's done for us. So we will need a motion to accept his retirement.
We'll make the motion to accept next to retirement.
It's a motion on the floor from Gina, can we get a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Stephanie, all those in favor, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried unanimously. Uh, Scott is putting together a community facilities grant and Scott, you wanna come talk about that a little bit?
This has been something that the fire department, fire department has applied for beforehand, other cities are applying for, it's fairly common. But I guess there was just some conversations in regards to our fire department building, needing some upgrades, so I'd like to move forward and try and see if we can secure a grant and get some funding together for that.
Absolutely. Only thing is you can't tell Terry what kind of grant it is. Because she's gonna put it in the paper and everybody's gonna be applying for it.
Man, they're really bold with you guys.
Yeah, they are, Terry, you're really rough, she can't print that.
Yeah, but here's the deal, if Terry doesn't print it, Scott's just gonna put it on the radio.
It's on the radio in my morning.
That's right.
Realistically, it's a, it's a revolving grant, it's been out there for a number of years, so anyone could go and try and find this if they wanted to in the past, so most of the cities are already aware of it.
USDA.
Correct, it's USDA grant, it's for public bodies of one thousand or less.
And I applied for that a few years back, it was for shovel-ready projects, first time it came along. Didn't get the light, so... Yeah, keep trying. You guys seen in your packets, there are some city recycling rules and advertising, kind of goes back to what you can and cannot. What you can throw in recycling and what you can't.
The one thing, I wanted to put this in a packet for you, one is, we constantly get called about this, we do provide this to the customers, it's on our website, it's here available at the city. I did get a request from a resident that we run this in the record or put this out in a boat, I guess. I don't know if we wanna spend those advertising dollars, that's up to you as a council. But we make it available, I guess it's, it's hard to, about fifty, right Bob, fifty, fifty recycle, the other fifty are really adamant about doing it.
Thirty percent?
Thirty percent.
Thirty percent recycling?
Guessing.
We did look at the figure, I mean, kinda...
Thirty to fifty.
But with that being said, I guess it's, I guess it's our duty to inform the city, obviously what they can and cannot and first of all that they can recycle. Obviously they know that though too, but there was a request put in that we put this in the paper, things like that. Do we wanna move forward and do that? I guess I don't know, we do make it available on Facebook, our website.
Can we put it as a, can we put it as a tie-in with our citywide cleanup ad? To add it next to the citywide cleanup ad that you have the ability to recycle every other week, blah blah blah, here's in your regular.
Will that use people to bring, we don't want them bringing newspaper and stuff like that to that site, correct? Because we cannot get rid of that during that day.
Unfortunately, you know, we could put it in the paper once a month, you know, I, I think the thing of it is, is that, you know, when residents move in, are they aware of this information? They're given this information?
Correct.
You can call the city and get this information, you can go to the city's website and get this information. I don't know if there's any reason that we need to advertise it in the paper unless we intend to advertise it once a month for everybody to come in town. Because it's up to you guys, but...
I think in the elderly we don't have access to computer, you need a computer.
Is that the request that we're getting is from our seniors? Because I haven't heard that as a senior, doesn't mean that's not the case.
I guess I really don't have a good answer for my, or I don't have a good opinion of it, because like I said, but, you know... I guess I really don't have a good answer for my, or I don't have a good opinion of it, because like I said, but, you know, Nikki and I, and Bob, we work with our website and everything like that, every day, so we know what's available, but.
How, how we'll have to start with, posted on our bulletin boards, our city, our public bulletin boards over at the post office, here at City Hall, over at the bank, wherever we post. Superstop has the bulletin boards, you know, those kinds of things, throw a few up on those to start with, and see if that, you know, I don't know if the grocery store has it, or whether it's somebody else, put it out on places like that. It's there for people to see if you're still, you know, if you're, you know, put it at the, see if the library has a place you can put it up at, you know, at some of those places, and see once if that helps some of the people make more aware, you, you're still trying to make the information a little bit more available, and if we still need to, then maybe look at taking one out at some point, but at least then it's an additional place where you don't need to find access to your computer. You don't need to call and, and call City Hall every so often, we did, we did put out the calendars that have it on it too, but then maybe this is an additional copy out there for.
And I think too, that's a good idea, like that, and we can also, I mean, I guess we can make a bigger poster or something and hang it via, you know, where people drop off their bills, to select people that do.
Yeah.
You know, we can make it more appealing, obviously, this is what, this is on a panel, obviously, that goes, you guys can get it in your packets, but just as a two-sided piece of paper that we hand out to residents, either by request or by residents, et cetera, so. But if that be the case, then I'd like to move forward and make a nice poster that maybe post it in here and get it into our locations.
Thing is, the information is, is there, people just have to take the initiative.
To get it.
To get it, you know, I mean, there's more than one place they can find all this information, and it's just about taking an initiative. They're calling, by looking on the website, whatever works for that individual, locking in the door. Unfortunately, you know, people have to take some type of initiative as well, so.
So don't you want to put it on the bulletin boards, or do you?
I don't care if you put it on the bulletin board. That's mine.
I'll do that.
Cleanup day?
This is, this is a grant that we get every year, I do need signatures on it, so I wanted to provide this in the packets, you guys are very familiar with this. We did have our solid waste committee meeting, we discussed this grant with, with prices on our appliances and different things that can be recycled. Just so the city knows, or the council knows, the grant is worth about, it's one thousand six hundred and thirty-nine dollars is what the grant total will be.
And that is from accounting.
Correct. This is something that all of the communities within our local area here apply for and do like that.
We tend to use it up with cleanup day by the time we page the app, because pay that.
Parents is out with everything, yes.
Yeah, it's, it's a really nice deal for, for cities and townships. It's a great tool to, to help people try and get their yards or their homes cleaned up.
And once again, just to.
And the date on it, we want to.
May, May second will be the cleanup day, and it'll be at Pioneer Elementary, correct, at Parkmont.
And that is the first Saturday in May.
Nine to eleven a.m., Saturday.
The fire department will be picking up the rush here.
Yes, and we do need to set a date, I, or the time up, I believe it's earlier that morning.
Fire department starts at eight.
Eight, okay.
Yeah, the garage, yes, yes.
Makes it kind of handy, actually, for people to drag their stuff.
Before we left, they couldn't sell it.
Yeah.
With that being said, I want to present that to you, because I do need signatures for it.
Make motion to accept the grant for recycling.
Four of us, Steph, can we get a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Donnie, all those in favor, please, seconded by stating aye.
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 Aye, opposed, carried unanimously. Yeah, yeah. How many council members can give a commitment to who's going to be there helping in the sprinkling up this year?
You know, I won't be here.
Go down as my.
I am not.
Yeah.
First, first time you're on, but I am not.
Just a second, we've been counting out my weekend.
I should be around.
I doubt so.
That's too far ahead for me to say.
Only if you let me collect money, I want her job.
Yeah, you can have that.
Show me the money. Let you know.
Linda?
I think that you certainly can come, Gina, the wedding isn't till what, one thirty? Come on.
No, two and thirty.
Oh, well, see, there you go.
Put a wedding in your garbage bowl. No, it, we usually get a good, good group of people helping out down there, so it actually goes really quick, and it's, it's a really nice deal. We have some department reports.
Don't really have any for this meeting?
Chief, I see you handed in a real nice call log from, looks like.
I missed the one month last month, so I know very much. March and February on there, instead of doing that generic one like I do, I thought it's important for you to see exactly what the calls are. The other ones are just broke down, I think in the subdivisions. Here you see each and every call that we've handled through the month of February and March. The calls up to stuff are one hundred and seventy-five, that's actually quite high for us going into where we at, where we're at this year. Starting this week, we started healthy living class at Holy Trinity, the gentleman was just here earlier to pick up our med drop box, yeah, so that, that thing's just a hot commodity always, but it's, it's good for the community.
Yeah, it was really nice.
Good for peers, so, other than that, that's all I got for you, there's nothing pending that's severe or anything like that, so, good to go, any questions?
No, thanks for the reporter, Terry, very nice tool to have.
That's what I thought, yes, it gives you more than I think the last one, I think, right?
Yeah, yeah, I like it, you know exactly what you were called out for.
Well, it's amazing to see.
Terry, did you copy this?
Yes, I did.
It's just amazing to see how everybody thinks because it's small, quiet little peers, but there's a lot, a lot of things going on that.
Look, the police there, there is, it's nice having a good, active.
But it's not, it's not only peers, right now, Little Falls is tremendously active, more sick calling, it just, it's unusual for this, for a lot of the cities for this time of year, it's just, it's there's something in the water that shouldn't be, and it's, it's busy all over, you probably see that same game, so it's just, it's nuts all over at home.
Now hopefully it helps down low.
Thanks, Chief.
Scott, what is your question?
I have one request, I'd like to set up a community meeting for sometime in the next couple of weeks, just start preparing for a couple of things with budget and things like that, so we're here and.
Scott, do you want to pick a, pick a date and then give Gina a call, and I'll make work, whatever I have to make work on my own, Linda, whatever works with those guys.
I would say it's going to be in the first half week of April, or second week of April, we do not have a meeting until the thirteenth, so it'd be a good. So probably request sometime the week of the sixth. Will the night of the sixth work? We will be letting Phil.
Yeah, I figured out the time that works for, for the girls. Just getting a call.
That's all I have.
Anybody else?
Can we get an update on the bridge?
Go ahead, Don.
I'm not on that border. You are, Mike, it looks really.
The covered bridge, it'd be nice, if you not have a chance to get down and take a look at it, I suggest you go down and take a look, it's turning out.
It's turning out very nice.
Beautiful. It's going to be a really nice addition to, to our fall course. Very, very good, so, yeah, you guys, good time, you should take a, take a drive down and take a look at it.
I think on this thing, we ought to take our council pictures down there, is where we should do that.
Yeah.
That way, we can throw anybody off.
I'm thinking they should probably have it done the first part of next week, for sure, so, yeah, just let them know.
You guys can have a little dedication down there with the stalls and whatever.
I think it'd be nice, don't you?
I think you should. So I think invite them when it's finished and take a picture with them down there.
Absolutely, they, there was a, there was a lot of, a few different entities came through, a lot of money, like it has on there, so, yeah, it's going to be a nice addition. Anybody else? Well, ask for a motion to adjourn. Motion on the floor by Gina.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Mike, all those in favor, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried unanimously.